I'd like to call order the Sparks City Council Meeting of Monday, May 12, 2016. To order with a roll call, please.
Mayor Martini?
Here.
Council members Abbott?
Here.
Lawson?
Here.
Smith, absent. Bybee?
Here.
Dare?
Here.
City Attorney Adams?
Here.
City Manager Driscoll?
Here.
We have a quorum. Thank you.
Okay, next is invocation speaker. If you'd all stand, please, for Pastor Omar Palmer from the Sparks Seventh-day Adventist Church. Welcome, Pastor. Is he not here?
He's not here.
Oh darn then. Angie Taylor, would you be kind enough to just say a quick...
I'd be honored.
Just come on right down. I know you're very good at this. Yeah, quick invocation, please. I'd love to put you on the... yeah, I'd love to put you on the right up front.
Okay. When I want to leave that, just follow me. In whatever name you pray. Father God, we come and we give thanks to you with blessings as we conduct the business that you have to conduct right here in your fire. We have a special blessing upon all those that serve and those that reside in this great city of yours, that they will do the work that you have for them to do. We thank you in advance for the work that will be done and the lives that will be in hands in your glory and your awesome name.
Angie, I knew I could count on you when I put you on the spot. I knew you'd take care of it. I know that. If you'd all remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Donald, would you lead us?
I sure will. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, I forgot my Christmas tie today, so I thought I'd just use the hat instead, so. All right, moving on. Public comment. Do we have anybody for public comment? I have one card for a speaker, please, and that would be Aria Overly. You have three minutes. Anybody that wants to speak under public comment, please fill out a card.
Hi. Thank you so much for having me today. My name is Aria Overly, and I'm an organizer for Action. Action was formed in 2009 to develop the leadership of people of faith at the grassroots level around issues of social, racial, and economic justice. I'm here today because over the past couple of years, we've trained 700 leaders from 43 faith communities. And through those conversations we've had with people at faith communities and members of our community, we've begun working on the issue of homelessness here in Washoe County. We've listened to stories of criminalization, of poverty, of homelessness, harassment. And so we've decided to work with them on these issues. We've talked to a lot of people out there in the community to hear their concerns. And so as part of this, we wanted to come today to invite you to a vigil that we're having on Thursday, December 22nd, in order to recognize our houseless friends, mourn the loss of our houseless neighbors, and take actionable steps towards creating solutions. Not one more person should lose a loved one to systematic neglect. The numbers for how many people lose their lives on the streets are hard to find. The Washoe County will not release the information to us. But we know of ourselves several individuals who have already died this year. One individual had a seizure and fell into a fire, leading to severe injuries. And so there's a lot of deaths and a lot of injuries happening out on the streets that are preventable and that we could be doing more to solve. Some of the victims are suffering from intense injuries from crimes committed against them, which is frequently happening, and have very little protection out on the streets. Our freezing out every single night with those injuries. And so we must do more to protect our community. So we'll hope that you'll join us December 22nd, Thursday, 6 o'clock, at the Potentialist Workshop, to honor the lives of people who have lost their lives on the streets. And finally, we wanted to bring forward a proposal to y'all that we hope that you'll take the time to consider. We're currently going to be working on pushing City of Reno, City of Sparks, and Washoe County to implement some safe grounds. These are areas where houseless individuals could camp in safety without protection from harassment, from criminalization, and from eviction. Currently, people are being evicted from their encampments almost constantly, often right before storms, so they'll lose their stuff, their protection from the cold, which leads to more deaths. This criminalization is preventable, and so we want you to take the time to consider the proposal of safe ground, just introducing it here for the first time, and hopefully you'll take the time to make that happen. So thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Aria. Public comment. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to approval of the agenda. Anybody want to take anything out of order? Ms. Bybee?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to move item 9.7 and place it before item 7.1.
Okay, anyone else? Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Bybee, seconded by Mr.?
Lawson.
Lawson. To move 9... to take the agenda as amended by 9.7. That's right. 9.7 before 7.1, the additions, corrections. Is that okay? Okay, all in favor? Or please vote? Passed unanimously. Okay, so let's go to... we'll do the minutes next. Consideration and possible approval of the minutes of the regular Sparks City Council Meeting of November 28, 2016. Any omissions, deletions, or corrections? Looking for a motion, Mr. Lawson.
Move to approve.
Do you have a second, Ms. Bybee?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Lawson, seconded by Ms. Bybee to approve 6.1 minutes of the November 28th meeting. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. All right, let's go right to 9.7. Consideration and possible acceptance of a professional services proposal with the Gwynn Center and the amount of $15,000 to support a multi-jurisdictional law enforcement and community effort to identify and recommend best practices for promoting effective crime-reduction strategies. Chief Allen and Ms. Taylor.
Good afternoon, Mayor. Members of Council. Brian Allen, your police chief, for the record. First of all, thank you for moving this up in respect for some of our other elected officials' times to get them on with their day and hearing this item. We would normally not have to bring an item such as this with this, what I would say, low-dollar amount in front of the council for approval. But because of the nature of the things that we're working and the nature that it is within our community, we just thought it would be important for us to highlight what we're looking for and how we're moving forward in our law enforcement community and our partnerships with different working groups within our community. And so we'll get through some of these things here as we highlight this. Unfortunately, several years ago, we had several national events that brought policing and minority relations into the forefront of a lot of conversations. These events prompted President Obama to create a task force to look at community policing and policing in America across our country. That task force was given a very short timeframe, and they have a final report of the President's Task Force on 21st Century Policing completed in May of 2015. And that was based on about six pillars and about 59 principles and recommendations that could go out into a community, and then communities could localize those recommendations in what worked best for those communities. When the President's Task Force was released, we internally looked at all of the recommendations. About 39 to 41 of them have a local impact, with the rest remaining being either community or on a federal level, and how we could implement some of those suggestions on our local level, working within our local community, because policing is a local community issue across the country. Many of the suggestions that were made, we've already been involved in and doing for a long period of time. One of those examples is the recommendation for having an outside agency investigate officer-involved shootings. Well, members of the law enforcement community here have only been doing that for about nine years. We formalized that process in 2007. So we're ahead of the power curve. We also looked at areas that we could further law enforcement in our area, and that's why I led the charge to try to bring fair and impartial policing to our community, where this last June, we met with community members and law enforcement leaders, and then we also had Train the Trainers. And in January of this year, your police department will all be having a class on the implementation of fair and impartial policing, talking about explicit and implicit biases and how they affect our daily decisions. So those are those progressive things that we're looking for in moving forward in the community. So as we are doing this, we've always had a great working relationship within our community with faith-based leaders and our minority groups, working with members to try and do this. And Chief Steve Pitts, former Chief Pitts, retired from the Reno Police Department, started our first Symposium on Recent Policing before the events that occurred in the summer of 2014. So we have been working within these relationships for a number of years. Unfortunately, again, this last summer, we had two... another two high-profile incidences, not in our area, but across this country, that were involved in law enforcement shootings in minorities, and that was almost within a week or so of those. We had two different incidences where officers were assassinated by members of their community in both Dallas and Baton Rouge. So as we were working through these processes and working with it, Angie Taylor came up and wanted to form a working group to work on the President's 21st Century Policing Task Force recommendations and how we could continue the working relationship we have in our community. So if events did take place, because bad circumstances create bad events sometimes, how we would have that working relationship within our community as a whole, to include the minority communities, to build those relationships so that we would not have the rioting or the responses that we've seen across this country, and to improve law enforcement and our relationship with the community. So as most of you are aware, this is Angie Taylor. In her role today, she is a pastor and a community, I guess, leader or activist. And other members of the working group are behind us. Manuel Sanchez is representing Dr. Manera from His Word of Life Ministries Church, Father Jorge from Little Flower, Sheriff Allen, and then Dawn and Patricia Gallimore from the NAACP. But to kind of go over why this group was formed and kind of how we got here today with the recommendations from the Gwynn Center, I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Taylor.
Well, good afternoon. For the record, Dr. Angie Taylor. First of all, just I want to just thank you for allowing this to be on the agenda and really commend the work of your chief. One of the things that we're aware of is that we are a unique community that we all call home, and this is, I think, is really an indication of that. I reached out and asked several members of our community on the law enforcement side, the faith-based side, communities of color, and even governmental agency side, what can we do so that we aren't the next community on CNN? You know, when something happens, unfortunately, it happens sometimes, as we know even with recent events, but as one of the few black elected officials in our community, I wanted to know that if that did happen and a family came to me and said, "Angie, do something", I wanted my answer to be, "We are." And that was really the onus behind that, in the midst of all of it, because I think that's really, really important. And so I just began to reach out. Mayor Gina was on the early end of that, reaching out from the governmental agency side. The chiefs in law enforcement were very early as well, because my whole approach was, we want to do this together with law enforcement, not to law enforcement. And this is too big of an issue for any of us to address, along with the faith-based community, communities of color, law enforcement, or municipalities. But what about the unique idea of us coming together to work on it? And then that's when really Chief Allen, who knew more about the 21st Century Policing Task Force at that point than I did, you know, explained the work that you were doing here in your city. And we just began to come together and meet. We started in late July, and we've been meeting every three weeks to talk about how do we move forward, what do these recommendations look like, and how do we say, "Hey, how are we doing?", and what are those things that we're doing great at? There are some things that as a community, we're doing really well at from a community and police relationship, and Chief Allen mentioned some of those things. And we also know that just because we're a community like everybody else, there are gaps and ways that we can be better, things that we need from the community, things that we need from municipalities, and things that law enforcement needs from us and that we need from them. So what better way to approach that than to do it together? So as we began to talk about those things, and we looked at who can come in and help us take a look, someone that's highly credible, that has familiarity with our community, at least from our state, that is unbiased, and that is very highly respected. We reached out to three groups, and as we called ourselves, just kind of this little unofficial task force, if you will, and came across the Gwynn Center, met with them, myself and Chief Allen, and another task member, task force member or two, and said, "We think this group could do a good work, and that's the scope, that's the proposal that you see before you." Our intention is to approach this together, to be very transparent about it, talking about the Symposium that former Chief Pitts put together. That will be an avenue for community input. I think it's important, you know, from all of the community, this is not just about the communities of color. So, you know, we want everyone to have a chance that should have a chance to weigh in. But the important thing is working together to say, "How are we doing on these task force items? What are those things that we're doing great that we can do more of? And then what are those things that we can fill in some gaps?" And this will allow us to do that. And so I am hoping and asking for your support in what I think is a really unique approach to arguably one of the largest problems we have in our country today.
Excuse me, and with that, Manuel Sanchez has a couple remarks on behalf of Dr. Mayor that he would like to add as well.
Come on down, sir. Just give your name for the record, please.
Thank you.
My name is Manuel Sanchez, and I'm representing Dr. Manera with Word of Life Ministries here in Reno. It says, "Dear City Council Members, my name is Cesar Manera. I am senior pastor at Word of Life Church, Ministerio Palabra de Vida in Reno. I also represent AMEN, the Association of Evangelical Ministers of Nevada. I would love to be here in person, but I'm out of the country on a missionary trip. The purpose of this letter is to kindly ask for your financial support for the retention of the Gwynn Center in order to conduct an independent study on how to evaluate and also improve our law enforcement agencies. Knowing that our community is of supreme importance to all of us, I trust you'll make the right decision. I also take this opportunity to thank you and commend you for your outstanding work. Sincerely, Reverend Cesar Manera."
Thank you, sir. Anyone else who has... Chief wants to speak? Don't be bashful. I know you're not.
Or two.
Ed Lawson.
For the record, Sheriff Chuck Allen. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, council mayor, city manager, city attorney. Just here to show support for this opportunity to bring the Gwynn Center in, to evaluate what we are collectively doing as a region. Chief Soto, Chief Allen, myself, met with the task force that Dr. Taylor cited, and it's just, you know, we want to be the premier region as it relates to law enforcement. And I think in light of what's happened in several cities around the country, we all know what happens. It's first, the event happens, the emotional reaction, and then the blame game. But I think this is an opportunity for an unbiased organization to come in, to take a look at what we're doing, and we're going to be focusing a lot of our efforts on the type of recruiting we do, the retention, the training, et cetera, our data collection, and how we can improve what we're doing, not only as individual agencies, but as a region in general. And so I'm just here to show support and ask for your consideration in passing this $15,000 expense. And this, just so you know some background on it, it's actually a $45,000 bill, but myself, Chief Allen, and the City of Reno, hopefully, we're going to split, we want to split it three ways, and hence the $15,000 request from the City of Sparks. That's all I had. Thank you.
Thanks, Jake, Sheriff. Come on down, sir. Just give us your name for the record.
Yeah, Dawn Gallimore, NAACP. And I just wanted to tell you guys that these guys are doing a wonderful job because they're receptive. You're not going to find this anywhere in the country, for the most part. The actions that they've been doing for the last two, three years now for the 21st Century Community Policing Task Force that was mandated by President Obama is something that's here with us, and it's something that we're going to have to confront, no matter whether you kind of like it or not. It's a change. The millennials are enforcing it, they're demanding it, and the cultures are, you know, under scrutiny all over the country. And here, we have an opportunity to be a leader. We're actually making groundbreaking programs for this county in northern Nevada, and we want your help and participation in continuing with this inevitable march toward the future. So this will help.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
I would just like to just, again, commend law enforcement, because no one feels very good when someone says, "Hey, we want to come in and take a look at what you're doing." You know what I mean? It could be much of a threat, let's be honest, just because we're all human. And all of our CEOs in law enforcement have been a part of this from day one. And I'm very proud to say that as a community, we have come together for this. I cannot say enough about the work that's already been done, and even jumping in this and doing this together. It makes me very proud to be a part of this region.
Thanks, everyone. Thanks, Angie. You know, and it's very good sometimes to have someone from the outside take a look on the inside, see what's going on. You know, even though we don't suspect that there's anything there, we think we're doing the right things, and I think we're doing the right things, but, you know, somebody looking from the outside might pick up some things that we just didn't think about, unintended consequences or whatever. I don't think we should be afraid to do what we want to do here. And, you know, proactive rather than reactive is always better, I would say. So I'm proud of our police and sheriff and all of our law enforcement people and first responders. I think we do a tremendous job. And again, we don't want to get to where some other cities are at. It's just terrible, ugly, just... I can't even imagine having to live there or being there or being the mayor there of some of the cities that I see on TV. So I condemn all... I condemn... yeah, right.
Wow.
Thank you all for doing what you're doing, even though I condemn you, so it's all right.
But I prayed in everything.
Mr. Dare. Yeah, Mr. Dare.
I just want to say thank you and for your work. I think this is an awesome example, not just for our community, but we have a lot of young generation watching what you're doing right now. And they do watch what happens outside of these walls, they do watch what happens, comes in the news, and the fact that you guys are doing this, and hopefully we get this on the news, where they can see that our community is truly looking how to work together in unity with our police, with our pastors, with our community leaders. But just being that example is, I think, is drastic, and that relationship, I think when things go crazy, and things happen sometimes, at all, at that point, all the rules, it has to do with relationship, number one. And so I think it's fantastic. Thank you for your work, and we will, I will personally, and I think all of us will love to support it.
Ms. Bybee?
Thank you. I fully support what the Gwynn Center is going to be doing with all of you, and I support... want to give kudos to our police, because I've seen in my two years here the tremendous outreach that Sparks has done, from Facebook to the picnics and community... our police are out in the community trying to meet our residents and our citizens all across town and forging those relationships that make... that strengthen our ties with us understanding our community and the community understanding and working with the police. And I think your outreach, I've been so impressed with. And this is something that, again, together with Reno, Washoe County, with all the other community leaders, church leaders, you know, our different communities within northern Nevada, working together, just, I think, like the mayor said, is a proactive response to what, that hopefully we won't be where those other communities are, because we all love this community, we love the people that are in it, and I think it's something we can, I certainly can support. I love the fact that it's using, you know, forfeiture seizure money, so it's not coming out of another bucket of money. It's money that I love spending that money on something that is so worthwhile. And I do have one question on what the timeframe we're looking at. I'm looking at what things you're doing, but what is kind of our timeframe on collecting data and when the Gwynn Center will be finished with this and where we move forward?
So inside the proposal, there were some date corrections. Anything that really said January, after January, that said 16, when they wrote the proposal, I don't think anybody was really forecasting into 17 and didn't have 17 on the brain. So there was a whole bunch of stuff that was in there that should have said 2017. So this comes before our body today. The sheriff is using certain funds where he does not need council or commission approval to move forward, so he's just going to move forward with his portion of the invoices. And then it is to be heard on Wednesday at the Reno City Council. So we're hoping that work begins in January. There's those four to six working groups or those forums where they are, and one of those is going to be our Symposium on Recent Policing, usually in the April-May timeframe. And then hopefully we'll have draft reports by June, and then our intent is to have a final publicized draft once the school year starts back and everybody gets done with all their summer activities and all that, hopefully by September of 2017.
Okay. Thank you. And thank you for all being here, and thank you for your community support and it'll promote all of us working together. Thank you.
Mr. Lawson.
Yeah, Chief, good stuff. I'm the son of a 30-year policeman in Las Vegas, and community policing was all about back then. Obviously, I think circumstances changed, the pendulum swung the other way. It's good to see that Sparks is on the forefront again. Again, we're right up there. We've been doing this for years. Thank you very much for that, because now the pendulum does need to swing back. We need to understand our communities and who they live with. It's funny, I had a conversation on Facebook, I dug up an old picture of my dad and put it on Facebook, and some of my old high school friends said, "I remember your dad. He was so much fun. He wrote me a ticket, or he ran me into jail, but I deserved it." Or they said, "You know what? It wasn't that bad, and he just told me to get on home, and I never did anything again." That's what the relationship is all about. Those kids remember that today as adults in their 50s, that they had a good experience with a policeman, and I think that's what we're after. Good job. Good job on you too, Sheriff, and good job on Reno.
Mr. Adams.
I just have a question about this report. What is it going to be used for ultimately?
The design of the report is, A, to kind of tell us what we're doing well, where we can show improvements, and it's going to make recommendations. As with any recommendation, you're going to read the recommendation, you're going to apply it to our local desires and our local needs, taking that recommendation that may or may not apply directly to how we do things. They're going to break it hopefully down into the three different areas and then have a region approach as well, so they'll be looking at Sparks, Reno, and Washoe County individually, but then talk about regional law enforcement as well. And it's to make recommendations on how we could move forward into the future. There's nothing that says if they make a recommendation, we have to implement it. It's just making recommendations similar to the recommendations that are listed in the President's Task Force, which you then have to localize and build into your organization the way it would work best.
Well, the doctor mentioned that nobody wants to see our community make the press. Having defended law enforcement for almost 30 years now, beginning with the sheriff's department and now Sparks Police Department, I've noticed that when the press comes out with a story, especially about the way law enforcement conducted themselves on a particular incident, friends are few and far between. Can this organization be counted on to support us when we do make the press?
I'm not sure exactly what steps they will take. I can tell you that in our discussions, one of the reasons why the Gwynn Center was selected is because of their nonpartisan, non-party relationship in dealing with issues more in a concrete black and white versus trying to pick a side whether it's a partisan issue or not. So part of our request with them is when they do make these presentations, that they come up and say, "This is what they found, this is what they did, this is what they did with our community." So I would have a belief that they would be there to support all the things that they put in this report that says, "This is what we are doing well. That's what we're asking them to do, is categorize what we're doing well, what's in that middle ground, and where can we improve in some areas to provide the best law enforcement to our community."
Thanks, Chief.
Okay, question or motion? Go ahead.
Just to follow up on what our city attorney was requesting, is there an opportunity for you all in your working group to work with the media and to have media representation to listen to what the plans are and what... to have more open lines of communication so that... and I know they have to report the news, but it is an adversarial relationship. I mean, I have to tell you that, you know, all of us that are in public office in law enforcement, sometimes it's a tough one. And I don't know if there can be an outreach to working more in collaboration of forging those good relationships with the media, who have to do their job, but making sure that all of our relationship with them is a good one, so that, you know, there's fairness and there's reporting that you can work together instead of against each other, I guess, is what I'm following up with, city attorney. I'm just throwing that out. I don't know if you've even thought of that.
One thing I will say is I'm hopeful that as we spend this week here, beginning with this body, and then on to the Reno City Council on Wednesday, that they will begin to get on the radar, because what a great story it should be that we're coming together to do this. And that can be the beginning as they watch and forge this. So that's really what I'm hopeful... of course, they're going to cover what they think is most newsworthy, we know how that goes. But I am hopeful that this is an opportunity for something positive that we've come together to do, and that can begin, you know, hey, we're working for this. It's hard to find something negative in this one, you know, that law enforcement has agreed to. When I called, they didn't have to say, "Yeah, sure, Angie, I'll be there," and have showed up for every meeting, and we talk in between any moment, they didn't have to do that. You know, I'm hoping something positive comes from that as a beginning.
Yeah, we're going to use not only the means that within our control, like you said earlier, our social media and the way that we can handle our own messaging. That's one way that we have improved over the last three years, is we can control our own message a whole lot better than we had in the past. And the plans were, once it went through all the bodies, to try to come up with a media release or a media statement or some type of press conference to show what we are doing together as a group moving forward, and then it's up to the news stations on whether. We have improved our relationships tremendously over the last several years with most of our news agencies, and we actually have one of the news stations represented in our citizens' police academy that graduates tomorrow night. So we're continually working on trying to build those relationships with the media. But again, those certain things are outside of our control, and we roll the punches sometimes.
Mr. Dare.
I just have a motion.
Please.
I move to accept the professional services proposal with the Gwynn Center and the amount of $15,000. of 15,000. This presented by staff.
Second, Mr. Lawson. Second. Motion by Mr. Dare, seconded by Mr. Lawson to approve 9.7, as outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passage unanimously. Again, thank you all for getting involved in this. I think this is good, good, good for the community, and a lot of good will come out of this.
Really appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your support.
All right, let's move back to 7.1, announcements, presentations. Presentation by Chief Charles Moore, Truckee Meadows Fire Protection District regarding the Little Valley Fire. Chief and chief, go ahead.
Good afternoon, Mayor Martini, council members, and manager Driscoll, Chris Naples, chief of the Sparks Fire Department. With me today is Charles Moore, the chief of the Truckee Meadows Fire Protection District. He's asked to come and speak before you today regarding the Little Valley Fire, which started on October 14th, and ultimately burned over 2,200 acres, and resulted in the loss of numerous homes and structures. Chief.
Thanks, chief. Mayor, council, Mr. Manager, thanks for allowing me to speak to you today. I've got a very short presentation, but mostly I'm here to simply say thank you. This was a fire that was obviously devastating. It moved rapidly. At what point during this fire, this fire moved one acre every six seconds. That's roughly the size of a football field. But in particular, I want to mention and say thank you for the excellent mutual aid relationship we have between Truckee Meadows Fire and the city of Sparks. Most notably, that mutual aid relationship did not have to be mandated by the state legislature. We do that. We do that because it's the right thing to do, and as I'm sure that you know, that we have mutual aid with each other on a daily basis. So with respect to the fire, there was a particular event that happened during this fire that I need to commend the city of Sparks for in their assistance. I'm going to show a brief video here, I think it's only about 17 seconds, but as we were fighting this fire, some 2,200 acres, we also had a fire in the Rolling Hills subdivision of, just off of Mount Rose Highway. That fire, at the same time, Little Valley Fire was burning, was about five acres, and was also threatening structures over there. So with the assistance of the city of Reno, we were able to suppress that fire without getting much larger. But this video I'm going to show you is the fire moving through, not the tall timber, but just through the safety brush and the flats. And you're going to see the intensity of how robust this fire was, and why it was such a difficult fire to fight. But as this fire rolled across 395, and eventually across 580, it threw an ember into East Washoe Valley. And that ember started yet a third fire. And if not for Sparks' brush engine, and more resources to come in, it's very likely that that fire would have grown, possibly burning all the way to Virginia City. So we realize that all of us have big fires, and catastrophic events happen if not for excellent mutual aid relationships. We just simply would not protect our citizens. So again, before I forget to say thank you to the city of Sparks, I'm also going to make a thank you to all of our regional partners that helped in this, but this is the first stop in the thank you tour. So this is, I think, only about 17 seconds, but we'll show you for the view from the cab.
[unintelligible] Okay, Dan, get a hold of Fuel 109, Division Alpha. And you should be on the channel. We don't have to, you all get in the commode.
So that just shows you that, you know, you can't put firefighters and fire trucks at the head of a fire like that. The strategy has to be to be able to pinch it off at the flank. And then eventually, you know, if fire's going to go, pushed by 80 mile an hour winds, it's eventually going to run out of fuel, and then eventually throw embers out and start other fires like it did. But after that particular fire moved through the area, then this was the aftermath, unfortunately, one of the homes that was going to pass. And unfortunately, this happened some 23 times through other crashes. So again, we're very, very sorry for the loss of people's homes, the disruption to their lives, but we're very, very thankful to be able to partner with the city of Sparks Fire Department to have you as an excellent mutual aid partner. Again, I wanted to say thanks, and if there's any questions about what we do.
Thanks, chief. Any questions for either of the chiefs? Mr. Lawson.
Chief, we talked a little before the meeting, you know, and we do have a great partner in Washoe County, in the Truckee Meadows Fire, and our mutual aid. And you're right, we don't have to be legislated into it, we're happy to do it. You guys support us greatly, especially your fire station 17 in Spanish Springs, and we know, don't we, chief? We rely on them quite often to help us out. So I know that, I can say for the fire department, they're happy to help, and we're happy to help you when you need it, just like you are when we need it. So thank you.
Ms. Bybee.
I would just like to thank both of you. Please extend to all your firefighters that were out there fighting that fire and dealing with extraordinary circumstances, that, how much we appreciate it, and how rough it was for the community, but through your efforts, there were homes saved and lives saved that could have been lost. So under those circumstances, with the winds, and we're just unimaginable. So just thank you, and please thank your crews that were out there fighting that. Appreciate it greatly. Thanks.
Good work, really. Mutual aid like it's supposed to work, isn't it? Yeah, so. Next, gentlemen. Appreciate it. Thank you for all you've done. Thanks. Okay, next, 7.2, presentation on the draft sewer model update to the city of Sparks sanitary sewer master plan. Mr. Hummel.
Isn't this supposed to be the good news section?
Yes. Everything with poos, good news, correct?
Yeah. Wouldn't you?
Yeah. So thank you, Gino, Mayor Martini, members of council. For the record, Andy Hummel, utility manager for the city of Sparks. I'm here today to present our sewer model update, which is a $400,000 project that we began in April of 2015, with our consultant, Atkins. From Atkins, with me here today, I have Brian James and Dan Stuckey, who are the horsepower behind this effort. So we started this effort mainly to update our 2005 sewer model, the last time we had done it. In that 2005 model, we simplified the 30,000 parcels in the city of Sparks into 46 sewage basins, basically big blocks of land, didn't really follow any parcel lines, properties, anything like that. They were based on traffic analysis zones that were the best available data at the time. And those 46 drainage basins were routed to our sewer interceptor backbone of our system, generally the pipes 12 inches and bigger. That's essentially the limit of the technology and the computers at that time. So technology and data have improved dramatically over that last decade, also seen a lot of master planning and land use changes with the boom, and then the recession, so we felt it was a good time to do a master plan update of our sewer system. So with that, we went to RFP and selected Atkins, and what we settled on was we really wanted a living model or dynamic approach to this. We wanted to be able to use our expansive GIS database, our computer database of the city, and our various utilities. Wanted to incorporate current wastewater generation rates, those have changed dramatically over the years as well, thanks to low-flow fixtures and things like that. We wanted to be dynamic, if there was a large land use change, or if we saw additional wastewater flow rate changes, things like that in the future, that that'd be able to be easily changed. One of our most important things, we wanted to be parcel-based, so take the, all the parcels that currently exist, and be able to load those individually into the model. Wanted to tell us our current capacity as it exists today, and then also what we would see at build-out for planning purposes. Wanted to be a tool that we could help answer questions about development changes and related impacts, you know, you do your job, and also to drive our capital improvement project planning efforts. One of the key inputs into this model was our sanitary sewer flows. We approached that in a couple of different directions. We looked at our current sanitary sewer flows. We have five sanitary sewer flow meters in the city of Sparks. And it's important to point out, this exhibit on the right, here in the council packets that are available, the PDF version has the follow-up of those versions that are easier to see, so. So we did a metering program. We have long-term meters that are out there collecting data, data sets for us for years. And then we also did about a two-week program, put some temporary meters out, divided the city into various basins to be able to capture residential, industrial, commercial-type land uses, and see what flows we were getting. We also worked with our partners at Tumwarp, that's our picture here on the left side. They have water meters essentially on every parcel in the area that they serve. We were able to use that data to compare against the sewer metering data, to give us tighter flow assumptions for our various land uses that we use in the model. And with that water meter data, we were also able to account for a unique kind of one-off, if we have a certain business type, or something that was using a substantial amount of water compared to other ones in that group, we're able to see that and account for it. So first, the other big piece of the model was incorporating our existing sanitary sewer system into the model. We have about 350 miles of pipeline in the city, ranging anywhere from 3 inches all the way up to 60 inches. We modeled about 65% of that, or 215 miles of pipeline in the city, and that is on this exhibit, the green shown here. In the more urban core, older areas of Sparks, we modeled virtually everything. As we moved out into Spanish Springs and some of our newer areas, we stuck to more of that backbone of the system, the 12-inch and bigger, largely because in Spanish Springs, that was master planned. We're not seeing a big redevelopment push out there, like we are in more of the urban core, where we need to see that smaller infrastructure and what those impacts would be. We did, in areas that where our infrastructure reached, essentially to the fringes of our current city boundary, we did model that smaller, those smaller pipes all the way to the boundary, so any redevelopment, annexations, things like that, we can more quickly tell what those impacts would be. We incorporated the 11 land uses that we settled on for our various parcels out there. We worked with TMRPA, the Truckee Meadows Region Planning Authority, and their housing projections to look at build-out for those, as well as any consensus forecast, timing, development, that type of stuff. We currently have about 39,000 residential dwelling units in Sparks, and just under 9,000 acres of non-residential. In that build-out condition, we're adding about 18,500 residential dwelling units, and just under 2,000 acres of non-residential, and that is within the sphere of Sparks. So with that, we were able to look at our existing system capacity. Again, this is one of the exhibits, there's a full-size version in your packet, but we had them color-code our backbone of the system, bigger pipes, to look at as it currently sits today, with what's built, pipes in the ground, parcels that are currently flowing to our system, as well as any flows that we have coming in from outside areas. We have our Spanish Springs, Washoe County, that's flowing in a couple of areas, as does Sun Valley in this line here. Had them color-code based on capacity that's remaining in those pipes, red being we have one or less million gallons a day of flow, and then on down, the purple at nine or greater. So Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility, our treatment plant's down here, as you expect as we get closer to it, everything kind of funnels to that facility, and we get more and more capacity in those pipes as we get closer. So we now have a model that is pretty dynamic. Able to make, I mentioned land use changes at the parcel level, if we have somebody that comes in, wants to rezone a property, able to input that, see what that impact would be. Able to, as development occurs, go back and update if we saw it, those flows are dramatically different than what was originally in the model, to update it to be, ensure we're being sustainable. Also able to incorporate any development constraints in those future parcels, to account for things like slopes, wetlands, undevelopable area. So that's generally shown by this exhibit here. We have, you know, a total parcel size, but only a portion of it could actually be developed that was accounted for in the model, for what could have been actually developed there. This figure here on the right was what we used for the build-out, so all those various land uses that I was talking about before, that's how those were loaded into the model. Also had our consultant look at build-out system capacity, once all of those land uses on that previous exhibit would be built, as well as any capital project needs that our consultant identified are built, to see what remaining room is in our pipes. They came up with about a little over 16 million that is needed for a capital improvement plan. That's about two-thirds based on problems that we have today, existing problems, and a third future. Those are prioritized based on what we in the engineering world refer to depth over diameter, D over D, essentially how full that pipe is. Instead of trigger, 75%? Yeah, 75% is what we settled on for this. We also looked at wet weather when we did our temporary flow monitoring. We managed to have those meters out by luck in the summer of 2015, when we had our big rain event in DeAndrea, so we were able to get real data. So we looked at it not only from a dry or just average day, what impacts we would have, but also in a wet weather or rain event, kind of two different problems, and whether it was a short-term, short-term or a long-term, you know, something that's out in the future. We did have them establish triggers, is this an existing problem? This project can be caused by a certain development or redevelopment of an area, or accepted conversions, that we could be able to watch for that and see what would potentially cause us to need to go spend that money. So in this figure, again, same color scheme, with the 1 million gallons a day or less in the red, see those red colors show up kind of on the edges of our system where there's less coming into it, and then again, the purple at 9 million gallons a day or greater of capacity, and that's really showing up kind of down, closer to our facility at Tumwarp with our bigger pipes, so. Other key thing we looked at was our wastewater flow projections. We looked at these from a build-out standpoint, so again, once all the, all those land uses are fully realized today, as we currently see it, we see about 9.43 million gallons a day of flow from Sparks, that is delivered and treated at the Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility here, or Tumwarp. We share that facility with our partner, City of Reno. We get a little over 31% of plant capacity. So what that means to us is we get to use about 14.58 million gallons a day, as it currently exists. For the build-out standpoint, for city of Sparks, we saw 11.96, just under 12 million gallons a day. For Washoe County and Sun Valley, we have agreements with them to provide conveyance and treatment. Today, Washoe County, and that is the Spanish Springs and Incorporated areas, what we receive and treat, we get about 0.63 million gallons a day. At build-out, our agreement with Washoe County is for 2.29 million gallons a day, and then with Sun Valley, we're currently receiving just under 1 million gallons a day. Our agreement with them is for 2.1. So we took a look, just to kind of see the end of the forecast, consensus forecast, it's a 2035 forecast, where that puts us. We're estimating our total Sparks contribution at that time to be about 13 million. We're estimating our total Sparks contribution at that time to be about 13 million gallons a day or less, so still within that 14.58 share capacity. However, we did, through this modeling effort, identify that at build-out, we're seeing about 16.35 million gallons a day if those two agreements are fully realized and everything that's works, happens the way it's currently shown. So it's, it's over there, but it's, you know, you have a problem like that, if it's a long-term, there's numerous solutions that we're also working on there. So. So in summary, sewer capacity is really two components, hydraulic and treatment. The hydraulic or pipe capacity is what our focus on was in this report. Those are related, but they do have unique solutions. We chose to look at build-out from the pipe standpoint because it's difficult to make a pipe bigger after the fact. You gotta dig it back up, usually that big infrastructure that, those interceptors located right in the middle of a busy street, under railroads, under a river, things like that. So you want that to be right. Whereas from the treatment side, you know, it can be things like adding a process or something like that that's less impactful to the, to the public necessarily. So. And we also feel that we've produced a model that is going to be a great tool for us, powerful and dynamic, to help guide land use and capital project decisions and be able to grow and as those land use changes occur. So moving forward, we are looking at doing a public workshop in January with the council to get into more of the technical side of the model. Any questions like that, any, you know, demonstrations, that kind of stuff, we can do then, and then move forward with a resolution or present a resolution, as well as to, you know, accept this report and model moving forward. So that's the plan. And with that, that's my presentation. If you have any questions.
So we will go over this more, Jim. We're beginning to talk more about the sewer plant too in our January meeting?
Uh, we could, yeah.
That would be indefinite. We need, because they are intertwined, obviously. We can send all the pipes we want down there if we can't treat it and not doing anyone any good.
Yeah.
And are we presenting to regional planning also? Are they aware of this study?
Uh, we've worked heavily with, with staff and our partners over there. We spent an hour over there with them this morning. We worked, they were doing more of a regional sewer look, or sewer modeling efforts at the same time as we were doing this, and we spent a lot of time with them. As far as presenting to regional, we don't have any plans at this time that we could.
Can I suggest that we do that just to make the rest of the valley aware of what we're doing?
Yeah.
So because it affects them also, affects Reno. Did Reno do a study similar to this?
Reno has done a recent effort. It's been two years since they last updated theirs.
Okay. Yeah, I just want to make sure we're all on the same page because we're all using the same sewer plant down there.
Yep.
Thank you.
So Andy, really, the issue is, is capacity that you can treat at the, that the pipe system looks pretty good, except in some spots, but really the capacity at build-out. And you gave us numbers for 2035, which were still okay. We're within the capacity to treat, but the build-out, is it true? We really don't know. It's not times certain of when that build-out would be because we don't know if the development that's been approved or what things could change on land use and on density and everything. So do we have any ballpark, or is there anybody to really tell what are, what date build-out will occur?
That's a fairly nebulous date to give. Unfortunately, it just gets so far out that...
I'd make some money then.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, but things change, you know, looking at five to 10-year timeframe can be, you know, fairly confident. And then beyond that, growth patterns, things like that, just start moving around so much that it's hard to tell. Basically, what we saw was the 2035 forecast was about half of what our build-out number was, so possibly in that four-year time horizon, but yeah, things change.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to tell you, thank you for doing this. I think when it comes to the strategy of being able to think ahead, I think our developers and us and everything we're trying to do, these become very important. I can't imagine the dreams you had on this project. They're probably not something you should share with anybody. But, but I'll just tell you that I know you worked really hard on it. It's, obviously, it was a very big thing, and it sounds like one of the things that I kind of learned is that they're very dynamic numbers where for us to come back in and change anything, it actually updates rather quickly. So you definitely put the work into it, and so thank you to the staff. And I think this kind of strategy of us being able to lay out really gives us some certainty that the future, we can do what we need to do. So thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to echo Councilman Dare's comments. I gotta tell you, folks, this is one heck of a model. I mean, it will, from a legal standpoint, it will make it far easier for our office to defend your land use decisions. I think it'll be, it'll make it far easier for you to make legally defensible land use decisions. As a matter of fact, I got to play with this model a little bit, and I gave you some legal advice a couple of weeks ago on a project that was approved at Sparks Boulevard and Pyramid. And I don't know if my legal advice would have been the same had I had access to this study beforehand. Nevertheless, I'm very excited about it. A lot of thought and effort went into this, and I think it's going to be a huge tool for the city.
Thanks, Chad. It's wonderful to see even our attorneys are working on the sewer plant.
Your attorney gets excited about something you know, it's pretty, gotta be good.
Gotta be good stuff, right?
Good stuff.
Andy, thanks. Appreciate it. Look forward to the workshop. All right, let's move on to consent items, 8.1 through 8.5. Anybody want to pull a consent item, Mr. Lawson?
I'd like to make a motion if there's no one wants to pull an item.
Okay.
To approve consent items 8.1 through 8.5.
Ms. Bybee?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Lawson, seconded by Ms. Bybee to approve consent items 8.1 through 8.5. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Let's move on to 9.1, consideration, discussion, possible approval of the mayor's recommendation of a one-three-year term appointment to the Sparks Parks and Recreation Commission. My recommendation is Laura Bayer. Looking for discussion or for a motion? Mr. Lawson?
I'd like to move to approve the mayor's choice for Parks and Rec Commission of Laura Bayer.
Mr. Dare?
Second.
Move by Mr. Lawson, seconded by Mr. Dare to approve Laura Bayer as our new Parks Commissioner. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. And Laura's here, I believe. You want to come down for just a second, Laura? Come on down, introduce yourself, say your name for the record, please, and welcome aboard. We appreciate it.
Thank you all so much, Laura Bayer, for the record. I've worked with Mayor Martini, Mr. Smith, Mr. Lawson, as part of the Truckee River Flood Management Authority for eight or nine years now, and love living in Sparks and really am looking forward to contributing. So thank you for your confidence in me.
Thanks, Laura.
I appreciate it.
Appreciate you stepping up, really. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to 9.2. Whoop. Want to vote on this?
You have a second appointment with the Airport Noise Advisory Board?
Oh. Let me see, who'd that be? Laura Bayer again, wow. Okay, so we have two appointments on Laura Bayer, and normally we don't put two people on, on, one person on two commissions, but in this case, we couldn't find, no one else applied for the airport noise, so Laura, we decided you'd be an expert on that particular panel, so.
That's what happened.
All right, any further discussion? I'm sorry about that. Mr. Lawson?
I'd make a motion that we approve Laura Bayer on the noise, what is it?
Yes, airport noise.
Airport noise.
Do I have a second? Ms. Bybee?
Second.
Okay, we had a motion by Mr. Lawson, seconded by Ms. Bybee to put Laura Bayer on the Airport Noise Advisory Board. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Thanks, Laura. Again.
Thank you.
Okay, 9.2, discussion of possible approval for payment of the annual support from the City of Sparks through Economic Development Authority of Western Nevada. Go ahead, Steve.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Steve Driscoll, city manager, for the record. This item was on your agenda a couple of meetings ago, and I asked for your indulgence for me to pull it. There was some discussion and conversation about the fact that our large membership fee to EDON was happening about the same time that a consultant that was unknown to us was being asked to be paid through EDON by the state for discussions on effluent water issues that we had before the city. So since we've pulled that item, we've had some specific conversations with the Governor's Office of Economic Development, with Mr. Kazmierski from EDON itself, and we have had a conversation with the consultant that is being brought in to work on some of the water issues. We've determined with the expertise from your staff that the consultant is actually going to be of the help to us utilizing the state's money to do some legislative pieces and to bring some closure to the question as to whether or not we can do effluent recharge to our aquifer, which this council has directed your staff to get an answer to that question before we have any other decisions to be made on effluent as a commodity. So I have determined with the research that was done by your staff and by answering the questions that you've asked me, that the $100,000 membership fee and the $30,000 for the water consultant are in fact separate, they do not cross up, and I believe that that other relationship will benefit the city, and therefore I'm recommending to put our annual membership back in front of you for your consideration today.
Board member.
Ms. Bybee?
I move to approve payment for the city's annual support of EDON for the fiscal year 2016, 2017, in the amount of $100,000.
Lawson?
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Bybee, seconded by Mr. Lawson, to approve the money for EDON. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Thanks, Steve. Okay, 9.3, consideration and possible approval of a contract for the award of the North Truckee Drain Realignment Phase Three Project, bid number 16/17-006PWPWA-2017-0222QND Construction. Go ahead, Mr. Hummel.
Thank you, Mayor Martini, members of council. I throw all those numbers in there just for your fun, but this item for consideration is our third phase of the North Truckee Drain Realignment Project down in the industrial area, basically picking up where we left off with the previous two phases on the western side of Greg Street, and moving a little over half a mile to the east with about 2,500 linear feet of double, 10-foot tall by 14-foot wide reinforced concrete box, so big, big hole in the ground, basically, to realign the drain, push it further downstream, realize some flooding benefits for the City of Sparks. So with that, we received three bids on the project. QND Construction was the lowest at 14.1 million. Didn't find any errors in anybody's bids. We're recommending the award to QND. With that, any questions?
Questions for Mr. Hummel. Mr. Abbott?
I just want to make a motion. There's no question.
Correct.
I move to approve the contract for the North Truckee Drain Realignment Phase Three Project to QND Construction in the amount of $14,118,008.
Do I have a second? Ms. Bybee?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Abbott, seconded by Ms. Bybee. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. The reason there's not a lot of discussion, this is a huge contract, 14 million, because we've been discussing this for, discussing this for...
16 years.
Yes, thank you. Long, 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 long time, and we've been, everybody's pretty familiar with it, and we've been, worked on it very, very hard. And I'm just hoping we can get it in and done before we flood again, because we will flood again. There's no doubt about it, and this will be a significant help in the flooding. So we appreciate it, Andy. Thank you so much. Okay, 9.4, consideration and possible award of a contract to provide inspection and materials testing services for the North Truckee Drain Realignment Phase Number Three. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Martini, members of council, again, Andy Hummel, utility manager, for the record. This contract and the council item after it are directly related to the construction work to be performed by QND on the North Truckee Drain Phase Three. This one specifically is for inspection and materials testing during the work, to make sure everything is done correctly, materials are correct, strong enough that we can, that they're ready to be backfilled, things like that. So with that, that's my presentation.
Okay, questions or looking for motion? Mr. Dare?
I definitely, I'm gonna move to approve it, but I want to say, I think it's fantastic that we're moving forward, and I don't know how much I'm allowed to fully say this, but I, I think it's important as a region that we, I just want to put it on record, that the region really looks and continues looking at this issue, because I think it will help the whole region when we can use a whole area for that industrial. And I know it's, has a lot of flood problems, and I know this will do some help, but it only does so much. And so we need to continue to keep pushing forward on this and so officially. So but I do move to approve the contract to provide inspection and materials testing services for the North Truckee Drain Realignment Phase Three Project to Construction Materials Engineers Incorporated in the amount of $553,872.
Do I have a second? Ms. Bybee?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Dare, seconded by Ms. Bybee to approve 9.4, as outlined by Stephanie. Further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. 9.5, consideration and possible approval of a contract to provide construction surveying services for the North Truckee Drain. Go ahead, Andy.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Martini, members of the council, again, Andy Hummel, utility manager, for the record. This item is our third one with CFA Incorporated to provide construction survey during the project, to stake where the box is going to go, and then also to do as-built survey as they go every few days to pick up what's been built, so we have a permanent record of it.
Is there a motion? Mr. Lawson?
I move to approve the contract to provide construction surveying services to the, for the North Truckee Drain Realignment Phase Three Project with CFA in the amount of $275,000.
Do I have a second? Mr. Dare?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Lawson, seconded by Mr. Dare to approve 9.5, the North Truckee Drain Realignment Project. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Thanks, Andy. Now, is there going to be any opportunity for maybe folks to come out and see how this thing is done? It's an amazing process. We don't drag, we don't drag big things in there and shove them in the ground. They actually have...
Yeah, building it right there.
Yeah, they build them right there, pour the concrete in or in a frame, and it just fills big pipe that's really neat to watch. So I don't know liability-wise and all that stuff, that there was...
We can probably find your hard hat. Yes, sir.
If there's an opportunity, I'm sure we'd like to see that, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we could dump a few of them in there, wouldn't hurt. No, I'm just, I'm just kidding. I mean, they lost some at the dam.
That wasn't what I was saying.
You know, folks, I'm just kidding, really. That's, that's, that's a joke. It was just intended to be a joke. I have my hat on, that's a joke.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. There will be opportunities.
Thanks. Appreciate it, Andy.
Thank you.
Okay, 9.6, consideration and possible approval, $110,000 for a contract labor to support building inspection for the remainder of the fiscal year 2016, 17. Mr. Hart House?
Mayor Martini, members of the city council, I'm Armando Anelos, your Assistant Community Services Director. This agenda item asks the city council to approve $110,000 to augment the building inspection program in the, essentially out of the Development Services Fund. As the council is aware, Community Services has been relying on contract services to supplement our staffing in, in the areas of development review and inspection, and in particular in this instance, we have two building inspectors that we hire on contract through manpower. When we, when the budget was prepared last year for, in this area, we were essentially contemplating a single contract building inspector. By the time the fiscal year started, we needed a second one, partly because of the multifamily building activity in our community, and so this amount would be sufficient to allow us to keep these two contract building inspectors on. us to keep these two contract building inspectors on through the balance of the fiscal year.
Okay, if not, looking for motion? Ms. Bybee.
I move to approve the continued use of contract labor for an additional amount of $110,000 during fiscal year 2017.
Mr. Lawson.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Bybee, seconded by Mr. Lawson to approve 9.6, is outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Thanks, Armando.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to 9.8, consideration and possible acceptance of the city's comprehensive annual financial report for fiscal year 1516. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'm Debbie Kinder, County Manager, for the record. I'm here today to present the comprehensive annual financial report, as Mr. Mayor just said. It contains our audited financial statements, and I'd also ask your acceptance of our two corrective plans that are associated with this CAFR. Our auditors have found our financial statements to be materially correct and feel that they fairly represent the condition of the city, but there are two corrective action plans that need to be submitted. One of them is required by the state for any violations of NRS, and in 2016, we spent $8,000 more than we budgeted in one of our smaller funds. Our plan to correct that is to make a diligent effort to budget enough to cover our spending needs. The other plan of corrective action is a federal requirement that's new for any federal grant recipients. It's, every year, our auditors have findings about our financial reporting and our grant reporting, and this year, we are required to have a corrective plan for those findings. There are five areas of weaknesses that they have identified, and I can identify each of the, or address each one of those individually if you would like. Once you accept the CAFR and the financial, or the corrective action plans, we'll be able to distribute it to interested parties, and we will again submit for an application for excellence in financial reporting for the 36th time. One of our auditors, Kristen Shumbrasapak, is here, and we can answer any questions you might have.
Questions? Mr. Lawson.
I'm ready to make a motion if there are no questions.
I have one question.
Question, honey.
One question I had on the $8,254 that we spent more than budgeted in Tourism Improvement District Number One. What was that, did something change in what we anticipated, or what was that for?
It's a very small fund, and we had some prevailing wage expenses that we didn't anticipate. There's maybe $30,000 in the fund, and we just had more than, more expenses than we budgeted, but we will budget all of the fund balance available in the future and avoid that.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Lawson.
All right, I move to accept the CAFR report for 2015-16 as presented.
Have a second? Mr. Dare.
A second.
Move by Mr. Lawson, seconded by Mr. Dare to approve 9.8, the acceptance of the city's comprehensive annual financial report. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Thank you, dear, appreciate it. Public hearing and action items, 10-1, public hearing, consideration and possible approval of bill number 2714, creating an ordinance authorizing the issuance by the City of Sparks, Nevada, of its local improvement district number three, limited obligation refunding bonds in the maximum principal amount of $13,870,000. Go ahead.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I have before you a refunding. We've done this a few times this year, we've been very busy in the, very active in the, trying to lower our interest rates, and this is exactly what's going on today. The background of this, this is, was issued in 2008, about two, a little over $26 million to help pay for the infrastructure needs in the Legends area. This is not paid by the city, the debt service isn't paid by the city, these are paid by special assessments that are paid by the parcel owners, who have assessments still outstanding, and today, that 26 million has been whittled down to a little, a little bit about 13 and a half million dollars. So we have an opportunity to refinance, in government speak, for those of you who are new, that's called refunding bonds, so we're issuing new bonds to replace those bonds that are, that were issued in 2008, and essentially at a lower interest rate. The interest rate that we had back in 2008, we're in the range of six and a half to 6.75%, and right now, we're looking at about a 3.83%, so significant savings for the parcel owners there. That's pretty much the long and the short of it. We're going to be closing this hopefully on December 22nd, so there will be other closing documents that we'll ask the mayor to sign in the coming days leading up to that, but today, you're just looking to approve the ordinance authorizing us to issue those new refunding bonds. So with that, I'll take any questions, or we also have our financial advisor, Dan Wiles, in the office, who acted as our financial advisor on this deal.
Questions for Jeff. Ed, Lawson.
I have a motion if there are no questions.
Who cares, I have a public hearing first. Any question?
Other than, well, I got one question. Are you going to personally guarantee this?
Me?
Yeah.
Might as well, I've got no money, doesn't matter. Can't give my hat to Turner.
The hat makes it, the hat makes it serious.
All right, I move to approve bill number 2714.
We have a public hearing after.
Oh, I'll make a motion after the public.
Okay. Anyone else have questions? No questions, okay. So, public hearing, I'll open it to the public. Anyone want to speak to this particular item in the public? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back to council for action. Mr. Lawson.
Move to approve bill number 2714, creating an ordinance authorizing the issuance by the City of Sparks, Nevada, of its local improvement district number three, limited obligation refunding bonds in the maximum principal amount of $13,870,000.
Mr. Abbott. I'll second it. Motion by Lawson, seconded by Mr. Abbott to approve 10.1, bill number 2714. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Thanks, Jeff. Oh, I'm sorry.
I think the right, the motion was $13,870,000 instead of $13,870,000.
$13,870,000.
$13,870,000.
There you go.
Does that help?
It does, it helps.
Thank you. I got my decimals in the wrong place.
That's quite all right, it's the, it's the agenda item that really prevails in here, and you couldn't make a contrary motion. We have prevailed, man. So, thanks, Jeff.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. Okay, let's go on to number 11, 11.1, consideration and possible approval of resolution number 3304, adopting the land use assumptions, capital improvements plan, and associated impact fee for impact fee service area number one. Mr. Martini.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. John Martini, your Community Services Director, here today seeking your consideration and possible approval of a resolution that will update our impact fee service area number one fees, and I'm trying to find a figure. And it got left out, my apologies. Can I have the elmo, please? Thank God for analog backups. For the council's orientation, what's on the overhead is the boundary of impact fee service area number one. It is roughly bounded to the east by the upper highlands at Sumrani, our Golden Eagle Park. Southern boundary is just above the limits of the vistas and Miramonte Plan Unit Developments. To the south, it incorporates the Kylie Southern Development Division, included, including the Galleria and Town Center Projects, the Rialto Plan Unit Development. Kylie North, as we move to the north, this is Pyramid Highway is, is kind of a boundary. If the council will recall, the Kylie North Plan Unit Development does go to the west side of Pyramid, that's this area here, and to the north, the boundary is La Fisada with the exception of one, one cutout that was never incorporated in. As a matter of background for the council, the genesis of impact fee service area one really dates us back to about 1991, when the council before you, much before you, in fact, I was still at UNR, agreed to do, to bring seven, about 7,200 acres into the City of Sparks, which became our planned unit developments to the north that I mentioned. That was known as the Northern Sparks Sphere of Influence Plan. As part of that influence plan, that council at the time also indicated that they wanted an infrastructure financing plan to go along. With that much development, there was a recognized need for flood control, the sewer interceptors that Mr. Hummel talked about, being the northeast, the northwest, fire stations, regional trails, regional parks. At that time, state law did include impact fees under NRS 278B, however, they did not allow for fire stations and parks specifically, so our council at the time, in 1994, adopted resolution 2270, which adopted the Northern Sparks Sphere of Influence Finance and Concept Plan, which created basically a volunteer impact fee program. At the time, there were roughly four major property owners out there, they all agreed to it. At the time of building permit, they agreed to pay the fees. There were some changes to NRS 278B along, about 2001, that allowed for fire stations and parks to come into program, so the council at that time chose to convert what was essentially a volunteer, voluntary program to a true legal impact fee program under 278B. In December 2002, or, yeah, no, excuse me, in 2002, the council approved ordinance 2157, which did create impact fee service area one, taking it from a voluntary program to a mandatory program. State law under 278 requires that every three years, you update your land use assumptions and capital improvements plan, recalculate the impact fees, and seek approval through the Capital Improvements Advisory Committee, which for the City of Sparks is our planning commission. That was done in 2005. We were set to do it in 2008, but some things happened, and we didn't. We did, I was here three years ago in 2013 updating this program. This, before you today, is our three-year update, which the cutoff was for development as of December, the end of December 2015. This year's analysis, staff performed both the capital improvements plan analysis as well as land use analysis. We did retain House Moran Consulting, the fine-looking gentleman to my right is Jeff House. With that, if we have any need to get into the nuts and bolts of how the impact fees were calculated, he was our third party that performed that service for us. This year's land use assumptions, three years ago when we did this, there was not a lot of clarity as to how development, particularly in North Sparks, or anywhere in the city for that matter, was going to proceed. We took a very liberal analysis at that time. For instance, the Kylie North Plan Unit Development, which represents one of our last two largest green fields, has a lot of flexibility in the handbook, so if you can imagine looking at the handbook, most of you have, you know, the, certain land use can have anywhere from five units to 30 units to the acre. So we assumed maximum at that time, and it caused the impact fees that we're calculating 2005 to come down a little. If you will recall, in 2005, Kylie North was not even an approved project yet, so by '13, we had to add Kylie North in, it was a very liberal interpretation of that land use, it did cause fees to come down. Fast forward to where we are today, we do have some clarity with Kylie North, we are in contact with those folks all the time. As you will recall, Lewis Development Corporation has bought the Phase Six Handbook, they are in the process of developing right now. We are able to see where the Kylie North is more likely to go. In response to that, Senior Planner Ian Crittenden provided three estimates for Kylie North, a very liberal estimate, similar to what I did in 2013, a moderate estimate of how that might develop, based on our conversations with the developers, and then a very low, the low end. We chose to choose the, the middle approach, we feel it's most appropriate, but in doing so, we roughly reduced the amount of service units in impact fee service area one by about 1,000 in comparison to the 2013 analysis. Mr. House took the capital improvements plan and inflated the costs with accepting inflation numbers for three years going forward, so in general, if you think about it, the cost has gone up, the number of units in general have gone down, therefore the impact fees have gone up, and if you look at the table of impact fees I presented, they range anywhere from 20 to 30 percent increase over the 2013. Staff did present this information to our Enterprise Fund Advisory Committee, they reviewed the document, provided some comments, but also forwarded a recommendation of approval to the Capital Improvements Advisory Committee. In November, we met with the CAIC, being our planning commission, they have recommended approval to you. I'm available if you have any questions, and that, that covers my presentation today.
Mr. Lawson.
John, you said you took 1,000 units out, what does that represent as far as percentage?
Of overall developments.
Yeah, is it commensurate with the 30%?
Roughly 7, 8% overall.
Overall.
Of Kylie, probably 30%.
Okay, that's what I'm getting at. Basically, there's a correlation in these numbers.
There is, and I'll remind the council in a blink of an eye, I'll be, or probably not me, but someone else will be here updating this three years from now.
You just graduated from UNR.
Back when this started, yeah. That was a lot of brown hair ago, however.
Mr. Dare.
So, one of the conversations that, you're talking about impact fees with fire and things, there's a future possibility of need of a fire station out there, and do those impact fees...
Go to the computer, please.
End up, do we reevaluate, evaluate that in three years to look at that, is some of this have to do with some of that?
Uh, yeah, all of it.
So, is that part of these numbers we looked at?
Yeah, so, when the plan was created, with respect to the capital improvements plan for fire, there was a Fire Station Five, some upgrades to Fire Station Four in the form of a new bay and some addition to that structure, and Fire Station Six. I'll be happy to tell the council that we have finally paid off Fire Station Five per our agreement with Loeb Enterprises Red Hawk Land Company. All impact fees that come in now are, are starting to stack up in the bank to pay for future Fire Station Six. The figure before you is from the report, it is the capital improvements plan for fire. The green area, which is Fire Station Four, you can see the outline that it does go up into the Kylie Southern Development Division, that was the nexus for including Fire Four upgrades. Fire Station Five, of course, out on the west of Wingfield Springs in the Foothills Development, services the east side. The, the big area in red is our projection for Fire Station Six. I will let the council know we have not determined a final location, it will be relatively in this area, we estimate it'll probably be on Lazy Five Parkway. You want, you know, fire stations on arterials help them be more efficient for response. So Commissioner Dare, that, they, they have been included from the beginning, we have been collecting fees, we have actually paid off Fire Station Five through this program, just the structure, not trucks, not personnel, the physical structure itself. Any fees that come in now are going towards either Station Six or Station Four. I am going to have at the next update continued discussions with the fire chief on future needs, a reanalysis of where costs are for what a fire station costs today, do we, do we still feel that the Fire Station Four upgrades are needed, do we make Fire Station Six, for instance, bigger? These are things I will work with the fire department on to, for the next update.
These fees are not for personnel or that kind of stuff, right?
No, no, state law restricts what we can use them for, they are for infrastructure purposes only.
Absolutely. Is that Christian?
Is it, thank you.
Mr. Lawson.
John, just so we can connect the dots, we talked to the fire chief Charlie Moore earlier, can you point out generally where Truckee Meadows Fire 17 is?
Truckee Meadows Fire 17 is roughly the corner of La Fisada Pyramid Highway.
So, on your map...
So, the upper, it would be the upper, upper kind of left corner of impact fee service area one, it's right on the border.
Which is why it's so important us to have a mutual aid agreement. Thank you.
Okay, this is a public hearing, I remember the discussion, questions? Okay, this is a public hearing, I'll open it to the public, anyone want to speak to this particular item? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council for questions or action. Questions or looking for a motion? Go ahead, go ahead. Sure.
The approval of this resolution today will set the new impact fees effective January 1 of 2017.
Okay, looking for a motion? Mr. Dare.
I'd like to get to where I have the right thing up so I can approve it. I'd like to move to approve resolution number 3304, adopting the land use assumptions, capital improvements plan, and associated impact fees for impact fee service area number one.
Ms. Bybee.
Second.
Move by Mr. Dare, seconded by Ms. Bybee to approve 11.1, is outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Seeing none, please vote. Looks like passes unanimously. Thanks, John, appreciate it. Okay, moving on. Comments from the public? Anyone in the public wanna make any comments? Comments from city council and city manager, or city manager? Go ahead, Mr. Driscoll?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I have an announcement. The following committee appointments are available. The Western Nevada Development District, two members for two-year term. Persons interested in serving on this committee should complete a community service application available from the city clerk's office. You may also apply online at the city's website, www.cityofsparks.us, where you would click on City Services on the webpage, you would then click on Volunteering, Get Involved, and then you would click, fill out a City of Sparks Volunteer Application. Applications for this committee will be accepted until the close of business on Friday, January thirteenth, two thousand and seventeen. Thank you.
Okay, and for me, this will be our last city council meeting this year, so, from me and the council, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and we'll see y'all next year.
I'd like to call to order the Sparks Redevelopment Agency meeting with a roll call.
Chair Bybee?
Here.
Vice Chair Dare?
Here.
Members Abbott?
Here.
Lawson?
Here.
Smith? Absent. Martini?
Here.
Agency Attorney Adams?
Here.
Chief Administrative Officer Driscoll?
Here.
We have a quorum, thank you.
Thank you. Public comment? Do I have any public comment cards? No? Anyone wishing to speak? Seeing no public comment, I'll move on to number four on the agenda, approval of the agenda. Do I have any changes, additions, corrections?
Move to approve. Second.
I have a motion by Lawson, seconded by Member Martini. All those in favor, please vote. I think we're... Passes unanimously, thank you. Item five, five point one, minutes. Do I have corrections or additions to the minutes, or I'm looking for a motion to approve?
Move to approve, Madam Chair.
Motion by Member Martini, seconded by Member Lawson. All those in favor, please vote. Passes unanimously. Item number six, business item, six point one. Do I have a motion to approve item six point one on payment of claims and bills?
Move to approve, second.
Okay. Motion by Member Martini, seconded by Member Dare. Please vote.
A little slow, a little slow.
Okay, passes unanimously. Item seven, seven point one, comments from the public. Do I have any comments from the public? Anyone wishing to speak? Seeing none, move on to item seven point two, comments from the agency and Chief Administrative Chair, Mr. Driscoll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just reminding the agency, this is your one meeting for the month of December. We moved it to its normal second meeting of the month. Our next scheduled meeting will now be the second meeting in January, we'll be back on our regular schedule for regular reasons.
Okay. Any other comments from agency members? Okay, seeing none, we are adjourned.